Well.
I.
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 Before we have bigger problems and um we have to find a way to um pump waste from the city and everyone's residences. Um through another another way, and I'm not really sure how we do that. We have very limited amount of time if something would happen to one of the structuralized lines where it would back up into the city. And uh we're talking hours um so.
Do you have a plan for that?
Uh we can bypass and run some um we could manually run some things, but it's it's not ideal to run it that way. Um that would mean bypassing some things in the plant. But yeah, ultimately, if we take care of this problem now, um with the floor settling, we um hopefully don't have to worry about any of that.
Is there any change in the scope of the project? There were three options presented back in October.
Correct.
And we chose the middle one. Are we talking about the exact same scope for this?
Yes. Kind of felt that we didn't need to do. One of the options was to um basically look at and do the whole building. Um right now, um you know, if you put ten more, twenty more, forty more years on the um part of the building that um doesn't have anything more than a base underneath it, doesn't have underneath anything structurally like this pit is. Um you know, if it moves, that that's something that um may happen, but I don't think it would affect the um overall plan. So we chose not to do that plan, obviously, for money saving cost. I think we um we basically tried to um tackle the room where the problems are coming from and uh and put all our efforts into um. Hoping that that and the engineers um guessment is that if we take care of this in this room, it should stabilize everything else. So um yes, we're still looking at the original plan option.
Did BG give you a timeline for bid?
Um no, not really, no, to be honest, there uh part of it was contingent on um getting this part of it done. They thought, of course, now we're getting into the construction time of the year when projects are going to take place and everybody's coming out of winter. So um our thought process, if we got something going yet, there's a good chance that we could have something done and completed um by this next winter season coming up. So through these winter months, um I really want to get it done as soon as possible so that we make sure we don't have any more um structurally problems going on. And and we haven't seen anything change yet, but obviously we're coming out of the season where ground's freezing uh unthawing back and forth. And we're hitting the hopefully the permanent unthawing stage and and ground settlement won't take place anymore. But um that's yet to be determined, so.
Why wouldn't we wait until we have those bids back to approve an amount?
Well, keep in mind, this is just estimated, in my opinion. So the number one thing that's probably changing right now in the um in the um what we're reading here is the engineering part. To put a cap on it, I know, Trevor, you mentioned maybe a cap, and I know, once again, these are estimates, but um it we ultimately need to see what the bidding process comes back from the actual um contractor that's going to actually be physically doing the work. And and I can't tell you whether or not their estimates are going to be like this original one we presented you with and going to change and be on the higher side or or we can only hope the lower side, but um I I don't know. You can say put a cap on it, and that'd be great, but I I can't tell you that that's.
It still might come back.
Yes, correct. Once again, we're 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 going off of a known figure that the engineer has given us right now and an overall estimate of the project.
Excuse me, anything will come back, any bid, any whatever it comes out, whatever bid is selected or recommended will come to you for approval.
So does this serve any purpose?
Ideally, Commissioner, in the construction engineering process, the engineer's bid is a worst case scenario, and that gives us a budget number. We really need the number to know how to budget, you know, how to look at their numbers for the rest of the year, and this gives us that number. Now, it may come in a little bit higher, may come in a lot higher, may come in a little bit lower, may come in a lot lower. We don't know that for sure, but the idea is to give us a foot, give us a budget number that we can work with initially, and then we go from there. Hopefully, it's a high number. We we ask, we ask all our engineers to bud, to give us their estimate of probable cost uh a little bit high, conservative, so that we can cover all our bases. But the the world has shifted on us in the last few years, and that doesn't always happen. So yes, it's important to do this for budgeting purposes. Um obviously, you're the governing body, and you can choose to do whatever you want to do. But it is important uh for budgeting purposes to go ahead and approve this, and then we have at least a number to work with.
To that point, in my recollection, I think we only, I only remember approving the engineering amount in our previous meetings in October. You have that record, Leanne?
Yeah, I pulled up the minutes, but there's no amounts. It says engineering services. That's the only thing that it indicates in the minutes.
Yeah, I don't remember off the top of my head.
But anyways, in a practical sense, we can approve the amount for the engineering services, knowing that final bids will come to us.
I think um it just my opinion and and today's purpose was to um for us, the staff, to um give a little transparency that the the uh the amount of the engineering fees is came in a little bit higher and we're, you know, we're looking to get that part started first, and then we can move on with the construction part from there. Thank you.
I I would like to speak to something. I I I would imagine what would be going on is, this is a question that has came up before. Um the doing it this way with giving the engineered and having his cap set. Uh some of these companies are are extremely unwilling to even bid a project unless they know they have the approval of it actually going to happen. So uh I know that that goes on in Little Abbling with little contractors. I could see it going to the bigger scale with with this, so.
Leanne, can you remind us our source of funds for our proposed source of funds for the whole project?
Yeah, it is correct on the sewer equipment reserve, um and I did look up the number for 2025 that we have three hundred and two thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars available for that.
Do we have any further questions for city staff on this item? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve an engineering agreement with BG Consultants for process building, pump room settlement, and crack mitigation repair in the amount of sixty five thousand. I'm pausing here because I saw plus expenses in the motion. What were the proposed expenses?
I asked that question earlier in the meeting.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
City Manager Marsh suggested probably two, two thousand dollar travel expenses, things like that.
I think. Um I'll say sixteen eight thousand. Is that acceptable? Amount not to exceed sixty eight thousand?
Should be fine. I'll second. Motion has been moved in second. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller? Vice Mayor Miller?
Sorry, I'm having difficulties today. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I agree with the motion.
Commissioner Wet?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Next item, it under items for discussion is eight A State of the City Finance Director Johnson.
Suppose you want to hear me. I wanted to let you know that a copy of this presentation, I will put that on the financial website um after I've presented it. I also have placed the detailed reports at your um at your seats that show how I pulled those revenues and expenses amounts that we're going to see in the report. Um the report's just going to be in high level perspective um as we prepare for the audit where we get into the nitty gritty. Um I just also want to say thank you to the governing body for such a great 2024. I know that you guys have a a very large task ahead of you when you are making all these, like you, like you mentioned, Commissioner Koloff, very difficult decisions for the city of Abing. And I want to thank you for all that you do and um that you serve us. I also wanted to thank the city manager because without the city manager, we wouldn't have all these um highlights that I'm going to be able to show you. Um he is, he is a great leader. Um he sets each and every one of us department heads up for success so that we can have the tools equipped to follow through and have these highlights come out. Um so I just wanted to say that. I also want to thank the department heads um for all of their work, for all that they do, um taking that step to get that professional development so that we are so successful. I think I think 2024 has been one of the best years that I've seen, and I've lived here since 2011. Um so and then I want to finally say thanks to the staff and to our residents. Um we're not the city without everybody that I've mentioned, so I just wanted to take that moment to thank everybody. And let's take a look at highlights of 2024. It's kind of amazing, and I'm really excited, and I don't even know that I got everything. This was just off the top of my head. Um we had a street sales tax that went back into effect so that we can start collecting some funds to get the general um fund for street projects, that those little things that come up that we have problems with our residential streets. We have, we had K dot funding come in for street projects. We also had K dot funding come in for airport projects. Um we had Fourteenth Street get completed. Um we were able to celebrate the fortieth anniversary of the Sister City, which I think is super cool. Um as city staff liaison, just had to throw that shout out. Uh we have FAA funding coming in for airport projects that have been um in the works for a very long time, and it's really good to see movement there. Uh we had the CVB remodeled. We had the comprehensive and master parks plan get passed. Our staffing, as of the end of 2024, all of our departments are full. So that says a lot right there because we haven't been able to say that for a long time. We have a new ERP that has been implemented, um and I'm excited to give you a little update later on in the uh the presentation about that. We had our sports complex task force that did a lot of work um to get that uh voting in February. We finished the lead service line inventory that was over a couple of years. Um we had a lot of work to do with that. We still have a few things city wa, city wise, but we really uh did a great job in getting all of our residences listed in that inventory. And so congratulations, good job to all of it, to everybody of the city. We have new housing developments going up, um and we now have a Department of Commerce grant that we're focusing on. So I just say, congratulations, everybody. What a great year that we get to look at. Um it's going to look very similar to how I've shown you before. We're just going to focus on our revenue, our expenses, and our cash balances. Uh the purpose is just to kind of give you, the governing body, the citizens, our staff, and the residents, a high level overview of what our finances look um prior to audit. With revenue sources, we collect taxes, we have licenses and fees, and we get interg, intergovernmental grants, and then there's miscellaneous. Um I'll break that out. For 2024, we had approximately fifteen million dollars in revenue. The highest is our licenses and fees. Um and then it goes to our property tax, our sales tax. We had a lot of intergovernmental funds this year um that contributed to our revenue. And then um miscellaneous fees, which we'll talk about. Um and I had franchise fee broken out just because I had that done in our ERP, and that's how it pulled out. So you can see that when I look at licenses and fees, I did drop that into licenses and fees. Which let's talk about taxes. Um the majority of our six million dollars in taxes uh is property tax. That's just the nature of a local, small city. Um there's, there's limited revenue sources. Property tax is the big one. Um then it goes into our sales taxes uh that uh, excuse me. Taxes make up approximately forty two percent of the city's revenue. I wanted to mention that before. And fifty seven percent is property tax, forty three percent is sales tax. Um we have, I broke out the special street sales tax. Um I also broke out the gasoline tax that we get from the state, the liquor tax, and the transient gas tax. So the sales tax that you see is just our sales tax distribution from the state. Licenses and fees. Again, I dropped those franchise fees in here because it's a fee we collect. Um so that brought our license and fees up to five million. Um those, those CDs fees we collect are city clerk fees for licenses. Uh we have community development permits and licensing. Um we have court fines. Um we have those fees that we collect for services and programs through the rec center. So that's what makes up all of those different types of fees. I also dropped in our utilities um because they are part of that. We have water fees coming in and sewer fees. So a majority of those are our utility and go into our business fund. Um those other ones will go into the general fund or the recreation fund. Um you'll see those cash balances later. So with utilities, thirty eight percent is water, thirty three percent is sewer, and then minute amounts for recycle and storm drain, just to keep those operating. The miscellaneous, um I do want to note in your detail reports when I was pulling that. Um the K dot cost share that's a million dollars is is listed here, and that is not correct, and I have to make an adjustment when we do our audit, just so you're looking at those detail reports. I do, I did move that. Uh it would be true miscellaneous that's coded as miscellaneous is about a hundred thousand. That includes the DK County Department of Aging, non-government grants, special event revenue from the community center. Otherwise, you can see it's broken out pretty um pretty clearly otherwise with reimbursements that we receive, interest for our investments, we have sale of property. Contributions, those would be donations that we receive that go into special funds or other, um and then rent and leases, merchandise rent and leases, excuse me. Yes.
Can you please explain that discrepancy?
Let me go to the page. I wrote, I actually wrote the page number. Okay, so on page six and seven of the revenue account detail report, you're going to see on the, let me just explain those really quick so you can see. They're they're categorized and subcategorized. Um categories are our revenue main sources that I talked about. There's those six. You have taxes, licenses and fees. Um those are the ones that are the main categories, and then they break it into the subcategories where I've given you the pie chart. On page six, under miscellaneous refunds and reimbursements, that million dollars and uh it's like a very minute amount, um which is probably what the reimbursed expenses should be is one thousand eighty seven fifty. The million dollars was actually, should have been coded to intergovernment. So it came in as a reimbursed expense. I miscatch that coding, and it really should have been part of intergo, intergovernmental because it was a K dot um fund, if that makes sense.
And that's on page six, it's.
Six, and then seven would increase the um state portion uh for K dot funds by that million dollars.
I see, and so that's line item zero one four dash four through zero seven I know, or the account number?
Yep.
Okay.
And you'll see the numbers correctly reflected in the report. Just I had to make that small adjustment. I didn't want to make the adjustment in ERP because I'm going to have others to do once we get done with audit, so I made that note.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on. Um kind of talking right into that with our intergovernmental, you'll see that um K dot fund is different than your, your report is because I included that cost share. Um that was quite a bit was that cost share. Then we had K dot fund exchange, which also goes into streets. We had our Kansas Fights Addiction Fund, which I included that. That's our opioid settlements that we receive. Um we did get FAA reimbursement and CCLIP. So I guess I should go back. If there's any questions about revenue there, we'll go right into expenses. Okay. I also wanted, and I meant to mention earlier, I I try to mirror these so that it's very similar to what we work on when we do budget. And these all have to do with how we report on our state workbook form. So that's where you see these categories. It's because the state, that's what they want those categories reported as. So it's helpful to have that set up in your ERP so that you're reporting and putting your budget and all the things consistently across. Um so these are the same similar categories that mirror the state form, personnel, contract, contractual operations, capital and debt service. Our expenses came out around almost eighteen million dollars. The majority, which would be expected, is personnel. Um and then we have our capital, operations, very similar, um debt service and contractual. Of the six million for personnel, you can see how it's broken out. It's probably thirty five percent. Um well, I guess thirty one percent is benefits, sixty nine percent is salaries. That's kind of also very standard um for personnel and benefits. With contractual, um I wanted to make a note that the land bank and CID, while they're listed here, are really in and out. So you're going to see it as a revenue in on the revenue pies. You're going to see it as an expense coming out on the expense pies, but they wash. Um I include them because they're part of the report, and that's how you'll see it. Um we have engineering, audit services, our CID sales tax, which we do retain two percent of that um for administrative purposes. And we have land bank, our OCCK contract for the recycling center, um and other, which is very small. Legal services, keep that in mind as well, is not only our city attorney services, but our contracts that we use for um defense counsel for court appointed attorneys and for our city prosecutor. That's all part of our legal services that we pay. Our operations came in at about four point four million dollars. The biggest part of that is our equipment services and supplies. That's also very standard. Um repairs and maintenance is broke out a little bit different or separate from those equipment and services. We have our utilities, professional development for staff, and I think this is the first time I've got technology broken out pretty clearly. We were, we were working on getting that, and that's going to be your software and equipment. Our capital, we had street projects get complete this year, um which was the majority of that capital. We had our airport projects. Um looks like the utility projects have their own, um and I'd have to look and see what those were. I couldn't remember. Um I think part of that was some roof repairs, and that might be the big one, but if you have questions, you can look at your detailed reports. Um then equipment and parks and rec projects and general projects. So if you don't have any questions, or if you have any questions about expenses, we're going to move into cash balances, which between the revenue and the expense gives us our fund balance. Okay, so we have twenty nine funds. Um it's good and it's bad. Uh it's good because they are specific. Um I I kind of put out here what those uh fund types are. We have tax levied funds. We have special purpose funds. We have our enterprise, also known as business funds, and then we have agency funds, and I'll talk about those. Um just, I don't really do the agency funds because what agency funds really are are we hold that money to bring it in, but then we pay it to somebody else. So it's like a trust fund. Um so we report it because we have that money ins and outs, um but we don't have anything, any control over how those are spent. So overall, our cash balance as of December third first is four million, nine hundred and eighty six thousand, fifty seven dollars. Um again, this is unaudited. It should be pretty close. Um the biggest majority of that is our special purpose funds. And then we have our tax levied fun, or I'm sorry, our business and enterprise funds, and then our tax levied funds and our agency funds. So I did give you, I'm, I broke them out so we don't have the ginormously long barcode, and we're going to go by type. So our tax funds, our general fund is, of course, the biggest of that with a little over a million dollars. And then the other taxable funds are our airport, bond and interest, fire apparatus, and the CIP fund. For reporting purposes on the state workbook, it's important to note that the library and rec commission funds technically are tax funds, but we are not taxed on that. Those are taxed uh individually when you look at the tax entities. So I want you to make that note. That's why we don't list them here as a taxed fund. They're technically special purpose funds for us, which is what we get into here. Lots of special purpose funds, and it helps to just keep that money separate, specific for what it needs to be spent on. We have our largest one would be the rec commission, which is um through USD four thirty five's taxing entity. Um then we have our water equipment reserve, our equipment reserve, um and our sewer equipment reserve. Those come up with probably our largest function or our largest balances. Um and we base those on transfers that we can do every year. We have the sales tax street fund. Um we will be creating that recreation fund. It's not here because we won't be collecting that till July, but that'll show up next year. Um and then I'll just, just tell you, we have our special parks and rec, special alcohol and drug. That's the portion of the alcohol um tax that is brought in. Parks gets the same amount as that special fund that we use to distribute out to agencies that submit those requests. Um the CVB has its own fund. The special street fund is the fund that we have that has gasoline tax coming in and any K dot funds that come in keeps that separate pot. Um friends of the park, we brought, we, we broke that out separately for tracking purposes. It's always been part of special parks and rec. But because we were, there was getting quite a bit. It's those donations that come in. We thought it was important um for transparency to keep that separate, so we can really see those ins and outs a lot easier. Um special law enforcement fund is the fund that gets uh money from the drug tax stamps that there ever is any in our county um that gets collected, and then the other one is asset forfeitures. So we've got a little bit there. The library pool tax still has a little bit for any park projects um in the future. And then CID, Kansas Fights Addiction, that's the opioid fund. And land bank fund has its own. Sister City Scholarship and Tree Board are special setup for boards, just again, to keep those monies separate. Business funds, also known as enterprise funds, um that's all our utilities. Um so we have water, we have sewer, recycling, and storm drain, and these are our respective balances um for those particular funds. And I just wanted to talk briefly about what our taxes looked like this year. Um twenty twenty four's property tax, you can see that the mill levy was forty seven point three five six. Our valuation came in at sixty four million, which equates to the tax dollars that were collected of three million. And let's compare that to twenty twenty five. Um the mill levy went down, uh valuation went up, kind of the typical, one goes up, one goes down. Um and then our tax dollars equates to a little bit less than what we had before, thirteen thousand, to be exact. And you can see a history of our valuations and mill labbies here um from the last ten years. Uh also, I think it's important to note in both twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five, we did hold below the revenue neutral rate. So we've still got a lot of that stuff done, um being very frugal with what we collect. Question?
Yeah, on your revenue projection or your revenue numbers, you showed property tax of three point six million. Can you explain that?
That's what I have on the reports. I haven't audited it, so um I'd have to look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, based on my own, I kind of mess with mill levy and and valuations every year.
Oh, I know what it is.
And that.
It's delinquent taxes that we get collected. It just came to me.
Gotcha.
We're not going to know that.
I thought our levy was.
For our levy, yeah.
Fifty seven, yeah.
I guess that kind of leads into my next question. So Kansas assesses taxes in arrears. So are we just realizing those on a cash basis?
Mm hmm.
So.
As it's collected by the county.
Okay.
They.
So we are probably really collecting December, like so twenty twenty four taxes, the first half is due December, which we won't receive until
Yep.
Twenty twenty five.
Definitely, and all those sales tax, all those taxes are in arrears, sales tax, property tax, yep.
Is that about a month for the sales tax?
Uh actually, it's about three months. So that's all I have um in regards to specific numbers. If you have any questions that as you look at your detailed reports and have a chance to look through any of the other numbers, feel free to reach out, and I'll try to do my best to answer them. So I just wanted to point out in closing, we have our audit scheduled April second and third so that we can really tie those numbers down. We're going to be working on our budget process. Um and really, I I want to say thank you so much for the ERP software. It has made my life so much easier. Um I wanted to point out that last, the last two years. I wanted to point out that last, the last two years, I spent over a week preparing report for this particular presentation because I had to look at so many different sources. I had to look at Banyan, I had to look at bank accounts, I had to look at financial statements because everything wasn't in one place. We took, we spent a lot of time and a lot of effort and a lot of blood, sweat and tears to get it all in one place so that I could pull a report. I, I spent about a day and a half just because I wanted to know what reports I was pulling, if it was the right stuff I wanted, taking notes so that next year, it should probably take me half a day to get this together. So, thank you. I'm just excited how twenty twenty-five is going to look with the way the projects are going. I just see, kind of my theme for this presentation is elevating Abilene. We've really elevated Abilene. I think Abilene is a special place, and it's evident in what we're doing. Moving forward with our software, we're going to phase two because it's such a robust software, we want to get as much as we can from it. We're going to try to look into notifications. We're going to be working on the project module and the grant module to really get those tracking so that when you ask, what is a project? I can give you a number, I can give you a report. We don't, we didn't have that before, but we do now, we will. And for our budgeting, I'm excited for our budget because this year's looks a little different than next year, but I'll be able to put a budget in through ERP, starting at the department head level, and it'll go through an approval process in ERP. So I just, I love being able to use software to its fullest, so I'm excited for that this year. That's all I have.
I did have one more question on taxes. I assume there's still some delinquent taxes outstanding. I think the county kind of holds the responsibility on that. Would you be able to get a number from them?
Sure.
By year, how much we have.
I can.
Ode to the city?
Yep, I can get that.
Thank you.
And Leanne, I want to say you did an awesome job.
Thank you, thank you. Like I said, this was really fun this time putting it together. It wasn't as much of a burden, so.
So far, I have not seen anyone that has not done an awesome job as far as city employees or heads of departments or whatever.
Very true, thank you very much, Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yeah, I echo that great job, and it's nice that it's going so much smoother now. I knew it was just such a headache in the past to get everything into one presentation, so. Do we have any further questions for Leanne? Seeing none, we'll move into nine A, city manager's report. City manager Marsh.
Commissioners, all department heads have met with Smart Insurance to review their respective policies. There will be approximately five percent increase overall accounted for in normal equipment movement. We did raise coverage on a few items. Our police vehicle equipment, we raised the coverage because that has gone up over the years. Playground equipment, we raised our coverage there. And also, we raised the coverage for radios since the fire department got their new eight hundred megahertz radios. Kyle with Smart Insurance should be presenting a dividend check to the city for around about twenty-eight thousand dollars, I believe he said, this spring. As I mentioned last meeting, the city submitted their reimbursement request for the snow event of January fourth through the sixth of this year. Since then, we were notified that although the Kansas Department of Emergency Management was able to verify approximately one point nine million dollars of eligible damages, the state threshold is five million, five hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars for, and Governor Kelly, for Governor Kelly to request a major presidential disaster declaration, and we will not, they will not be submitting a request to FEMA, so we will not see any reimbursement on those dollars this year for that event. Police department has two more flock cameras being installed this Wednesday for a total of six cameras covering Abilene. Now, the Spruce Way Waterline Project is almost complete. Over the next couple of weeks, the water sample testing will be conducted by KDHE prior to them signing off on the project. And as I mentioned just a bit ago, the fire department has received their eight hundred megahertz radios from the countywide sales tax.
Thank you. And do we have any questions for city manager Marsh in his city manager's report? City manager Marsh, did you want to speak before? Okay, gotcha. Okay. If you have no questions on the city manager's report, I would consider a motion to recess.
We want to move right into study session or? Good, all right. I make a motion to recess our regular meeting and move right into the study session.
I'll second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we do recall vote, Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Whit?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Right.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries, we are in recess. We'll now call to order the March tenth, twenty twenty-five, City of Abilene, Kansas, City Commission Study Session. Our first item is the new two A, consider approval of a funding option for the industrial park infrastructure, C-Clip twenty twenty-six project and the recreation improvements in the amount of nine million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Commissioners, Dominic Eck with Gilmore and Bell has met with the governing body at the February tenth and twenty-fourth meetings to discuss funding options for the Department of Commerce grant match. In addition, there were other projects the city needs to plan, plan funding for. The projects include that industrial park infrastructure, of which two point five million dollar grant from the Kansas Department of Commerce, along with the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar match from the city. The C-Clip project for twenty twenty-six, which is a combined of, of the twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-five projects, compromising or comprising the uni, the stretch of Buckeye from the Union Pacific Railroad to Northwest Fifth Street and Southeast Sixth to the South City Limits. That's eight hundred dollars reimbursable from KDOT and about approximately one point one million dollars from the city. The sales tax passage for recreation improvements, estimated revenue over ten years is four million dollars. This will need to be financed with bonds to be, to be paid off by the sales tax revenue. Using the economy of scale and cost savings of one bond sale, of one bond sale and issuance, the total temporary financing would be approximately nine point one five million dollars. Of that, three point three million would be reimbursed funds, and four million would be revenue from sales tax over ten years. This would leave, if you include the four million from sales tax, approximately five point eight five million for the city to potentially send to permanent financing, with one point eight five of that needing to be identified funding source to service the debt, and four million, as I said, likely less, serviced from the dedicated sales tax. A recommendation to help service the one point five million dollar debt would be the combination of water, sewer, storm drainage, street sales tax, ad valorem taxes, and potentially twenty-five thousand dollars each from water, storm water and sewer for a total of seventy-five thousand dollars, plus seventy-five thousand dollars for street sales tax and fifty thousand dollars ad valorem for a total of two hundred thousand dollars. Now, keep in mind, these numbers are just brainstorming, they're not set in stone, and they're not. So, I mean, they're not, nothing, nothing permanent. It's, it's for discussion purposes only. These, as I said, these amounts are approximate, assumes no additional service on the one point eight five million dollar debt and can be modified as necessary by the governing body. Temporary financing is allowable for up to four years with the ability to pay off some or all of the temporary notes prior to final financing. This allows the municipality to budget for the cost of improvements over time, minimizing the impact on general fund. Temporary financing also gives the city the flexibility to pay down the non-reimbursable amount. For example, money generated from lot sales in the industrial park and the federal fund exchange through KDOT can be used to pay on the temp notes. Additionally, during the temporary financing period, the city will be collecting sales tax for the recreation improvements, and that will be used to reduce the amount of permanent financing for that project. Thus, the amount of permanent financing could be much less than the projected five point eight five million dollars. I'll leave the rest for your discussion.
Okay, I know we've talked at length about this, both in some study sessions and in executive sessions about different options. And I guess I'll just open it up to any, any member of the commission that wants to address anything that they've been thinking about.
Yeah, my, again, wanted to delay this at least another couple of weeks, wanting to make sure the rest of the commission has a firm understanding on, on what's all going on here because it's, it's complex enough. My perspective on this is that grouping these projects together makes the most sense because when the cost of issuing the bonds only happens once. And then effectively, my understanding of how this works is that temporary financing works as a line of credit for us to be able to access and use, which with us being so lean in previous budget years is the reason why those C-Clip projects had to be combined. There wasn't the revenue to be able to support those in that time. So this gives us access to be able to execute the projects, does it in the most efficient way. And then ultimately comes down, my big question, my lens of how I look or where, where I really pay attention to, how is it going to affect property taxes? And that's where that kind of breakdown on that final one point eight five. And again, these are just estimates. Really looking at how we can split that up, we can put as much or as little of ad valorem tax in that. And I think that fifty thousand dollar mark hits it because then that's, that's less than one mil right there to, to pay for all these sorts of improvements. And this is figuring, we don't make any money off of lot sales, which hopefully we do, and that the ability to pay down some of these stuff as these projects get executed over the path, over the next four years. So my perspective is wanting to see all three of them grouped together. That sets the, the funding mechanism in place for each of these, knowing that the final amount that's going to be in debt is going to be at that five point eight five or less. And most of that, it's the Ballfields project, so. Yeah.
I think one piece to that, that, and city manager Marsh, you alluded to it, and Christopher Whit, you did as well. Those industrial park lots are going to be heavily marketable. I mean, those are going to be huge. So I, I think we realistically could recoup a good chunk of that from the sale of those lots, just having looked at some numbers in neighboring communities, neighboring counties. I think it, that, that could likely pay down. I hate to guarantee that, but that could likely pay down that significantly. So I really do, I like that piece of it as well.
What numbers have you seen in neighboring communities?
I don't, I don't have it in front of me, I don't want to put that out, you know? I probably have it on my phone, but I'm not gonna.
To the rest of the commissioners, any? Commissioner Miller, any questions or, or what's your perspective on this?
Can you hear me?
Yep, loud and clear.
Hi. Yeah, so I think that you helped clear up the questions that I had as far as, you know, combining everything, so I don't have anything else to add.
Commissioner Koloff, I know just in past discussions, probably the project you have the most pain with is the C-Clip, just on the way that the project's being structured of doing both milling overlay and concrete work along with it. Or you still hold that perspective or?
I think my perspective on that is that we haven't approved a project, and we're talking about taking out a loan in September for a project we're not going to do for, I don't know, I mean, I don't have a timeline for that. Was it sometime in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven? And so we're going to be carrying interest on that, I would assume. I guess we got temporary, so maybe we're not going to be, we won't have interest carrying costs. I, I'm not in, I'm not in favor of it because we have not approved a project. So that's not the part that I have the biggest concern with. I think that we're talking about, it's a one point nine million total, right? One point one would be the city's responsibility. Eight hundred thousand dollars is proposed to be reimbursed by KDOT. Okay. The, the heartburn for me is really on the, let's say, industrial park. I think that we have some options there that we haven't fully vetted. I, I would like on that piece to maybe work with our economic development director, to call her out, to see if we can, if we need, need to reach out to the attorney general, if we need to reach out to somebody else, but put together a proposal for a TIF district and ask the attorney general if they will approve it. That is by far the most efficient way to pay that off. So for those of you who aren't aware, that allows us to capture state funds as well as the funds that would normally be the city's portion of the tax as well as the county and school district, most of the school district, but not all. And so that gives us a much larger pool to play with there. And I think that there's marketability to other lots out there, and it's really in the interest. I think there's one major landowner out there, and I think I don't see why they wouldn't want to participate in that. So I think that there's other options that we can pursue. Another option that wasn't mentioned here is revenue from the RHID. I'm not sure if we know what that number is. The numbers that I saw from the, the county, they had a, the number that they gave me included both the land bank owned lots and the privately owned lots, so I don't know that I can give you an estimate based off of that. But there's certainly some funds out there that will be generated that's essentially, the bond is already being paid for through ad valorem taxes. And so there's another pool of money out there that we will be hopefully receiving soon.
Commissioner Meisenberg, do you have anything to add?
No, I'm, I'm good with the combining, and I've heard from the public that the people I've heard from are really for this. So I tend to always go with what people want, so.
I think the piece that I do like, and since I've been on, I mean, we've not really even discussed temporary financing. So that's been kind of, it's something you do every day. But it's interesting that, you know, while this does finance the multiple projects, well, one, they'll be, it will be paid off separately. I mean, that's, it's going to be pulled from different revenue sources and paid off separately. So there will be some separation there. And then it also does, it gives us a little bit of flexibility in the meantime to where we can pursue lot sales and other repayment options for them to where a bulk of that dollar amount may not even hit the final bond. Likely, the, the sports complex of that, you know, that largest amount of it will likely stay in place. But on the, the other pieces, we've got other funding sources to hopefully pay that off quicker. So I think that, that gives us, it allows us to move forward at this time, but it also gives us the flexibility in paying that off or paying it down substantially in the meantime before we would move anything to permanent financing.
I hear what you're saying there, but I think when you look at the potential revenue of a lot sale, it's going to be dwarfed by the potential for the TIF funds to be paid back to the city. I don't know what those numbers are off the top of my head, but I think that even if those, even if those lots sell for a million dollars each, which I think we can all agree is pretty unlikely, there, there's probably a greater likelihood that they would generate a million in tax revenue through a TIF for an individual lot.
My biggest critique of the TIF district is that removes IRB tool. What you're, are you willing to sacrifice that tool in order to do a TIF district?
Well, I mean, I think Dominic mentioned this in our talk, money's fungible, right? So we're going to get all that money back anyway. And so if we decide we want to have an incentive that, that mirrors an IRB, obviously, the IRB and the TIF use the same funds, right? It's the same dollars, so you can't, you can't get them twice. But the city's going to get them. And then what they choose to do with them after that is up to them, just like we've done in the Highlands or the multifamily developer. We said, hey, we've, we're getting this RHID fund, RHID money, you're going to generate twice as much tax revenue by putting multifamily there as single family. We're willing to share that with you. And so I think we still have that tool in our belt. It's just not going to have the same name. I guess what I would ask the commission to do is to, if we could thoughtfully sit down, again, take some input from our economic development director, probably need to talk with landowners in that area. I'm not sure on the requirements of a TIF district. I think typically they are continuous, but I, I'm thinking of at least one that I don't think is. And so I think we have the ability to kind of pick spots that would fall into that TIF district for that purpose. And I think that that would be beneficial, not just for this site, but for other sites throughout Abilene.
So even if you do a TIF district, though, you still need the upfront capital to execute the project. So you still have to bond it no matter what. Unless you're going to wait to bring in that revenue until you have that money to pay for it in cash, but.
Well, it depends on the project, right? So it's, again, I don't know the incidents, but cities are probably not the most frequent users of TIFs. A lot of times, it's a private developer. So by creating the TIF district. So by creating the TIF district, it's kind of like the RHID. So we, we have the district, but it's up to the developer to bring a project to the city for approval. So once that project, if it falls in the district, it would qualify, we would still have to approve it up or down. So if Panasonic decides they want to build an Abilene, we can say, okay, we've got this TIF district, you can go out here. Or they can, or we can say, yeah, we don't want Panasonic in our backyard. Just having the TIF district doesn't do anything, but it gives us the, the ability to do it.
So we could always do it later.
We could, or we could do it now. I mean, it's, there's, there's no penalty for that.
And by doing it now, though, it requires discussion, it requires nuance, as Bond Council has informed us, that it, it's a stretch to be able to get a TIF district out there. It's going to require an attorney general opinion letter that keeps delaying this project, keeps delaying our ability to activate this industrial park. So, and.
I'm just looking at the, there's this general obligation temporary notes calendar of events. They're talking about a June 23rd timeline for starting that. I mean, so do you not think that we could come up with a, a timeline in that period? I, I, I understand the, the urgency, but I'd rather do it right than do it quick.
Well, doing it this route with temp financing, it's still, I mean, we still have time to, i- if that were to be an option, which I'm not convinced that it is. We could still do that to pay off the final bond. Cause I, I don't know where we're going to come up with, you know, how much was that? 1.85 million dollars like that? And there's only one way to do that.
We've got five billion in the bank.
I mean, but that's the, that's the issue. If you want to get it started and on top of that, that Commerce Grant does have those, those time limits on there. So we, we do need to get it going.
What is the commencement timeline from Commerce?
There's not a commencement timeline, but there's a job creation timeline. I think it was 28.
Three years? Is that end of year 28?
I don't remember right off the top of my head. Is it?
Okay. I know we wiggled those, I think, from our initial agreement as well. I think, I don't know.
And I, I like the line of credit or the, correct me if I'm wrong, but like I said, we've not really dealt with temp financing much, well, at all. In the meantime, it, it does serve as basically a line of credit for we are not, are we having to pull the full amount of the temp notes day one? Yes. Okay. So depending on when the projects commence, those would be staggered to. Right. You can draw down. Okay.
And we're certain that that's, interest is calculated as such? I don't have that report from Piper in front of me. What, what are other cities paying for similar projects? I know they had an estimate in there. I'm not. Yeah.
Uh, it's about a million in interest.
What, what is the rate on that? Is that the, the, okay, I'm just want to make sure I'm clear. There's a four, four-year temporary financing period and then a 10-year permanent period?
Correct. And that's, that's for that entire, what essentially would be a 14-year period if we went the full 10 years.
Thank you.
That is one of the things that I really liked about the temp financing piece is it allows us to, to get them all going. And we're not having an interest expense until we actually need the funds, but we're able to get the project going. And it gives us some time to, if there are other options, we can explore those. But it doesn't hold everything up.
Yeah, I think just, I don't know if the public is aware, this is maybe for YouTube as much as the people in this room. But we have, I believe, a requirement to bond that whole project for the industrial park. So because if we bond a part of it, we have to bond all of it. Let me be clear, and you can correct me if.
It's reimbursable.
I'm misstating that. So that bond, so the, the 3.25 million, the 2.5 will be reimbursed. So really the city's liability is only that 750,000 that we've agreed to. So I know that number kind of looks unnecessarily scary. Again, I think the commission is clear, but I'll just restate it here. I am, uh, open to the idea of doing this for the industrial park. And obviously I don't think we have a choice but to do it for the, uh, rec sales tax. I am hesitant to do it for projects that have not been approved.
When you, when you say not been approved, what do you mean?
You can correct me if you understand differently, but my understanding is that we approved, uh, engineering study for the railroad to Fifth Street. Is that correct? We did not approve the full, the budget. It was just for them to go do an assessment and see what might be necessary there specifically relating to non-surface structures.
Right. But in my mind's, the tiers of a capital project in the city of approval, it goes on the capital improvement plan first. Knowing that it's a problem, and then it gets to the point where it gets to engineering, and then we go to bid and then construction. Both projects are in the capital improvement plan. So there are known projects that have been improved by the governing body, approved in the sense of, yes, this is a need for the city. It just haven't been designed. And if they haven't been designed, it's because there's not a funding source for it yet, which is what we're talking about today.
Well, we are talking about that. I think that where we disagree is scope. And I think, um, for the amount that we're talking about, we could pay from the railroad up to I-70 probably if we wanted to. But if we want to dig up, I don't know, they, they had all sorts of different ideas for what we could do to spend money on that three-block section. I, I say I am opposed to most of those. And so I don't want to tax our citizens to pay for a project that I'm not, I'm not in favor of. I mean, that's, that's where I'm standing. I don't expect you to agree with me, but that's where I stand.
All right. Thanks for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Okay. Do we have any further questions, comments, discussion on funding options item? Seeing none, we'll move into 2B. Capital Improvement Plan, CIP update and approval for upcoming projects discussion. City Manager Marsh, Finance Director Johnson.
Yeah. So, um, talking about these projects having to be on the CIP. We met direct, or the department heads met to go over what our capital project plan looks like. Everything that we talked about on this particular one that you were just discussing, the 2025 and 2026 KDOT Cclip combined project was not on there. So, um, what we did is we went through, um, looking at the next five to 10 years. So four streets, we added the, the C clip. I believe 2025 was on there, but 2025, 2026 needed to be added and we combined them. The 14th street from Buckeye to Brady, we added the intersections at Seventh and Buckeye and Seventh and Cedar. For the stormwater, we added the northeast drainage that's been in discussions and ballpark drainage, which is part of the, um, the complex. Sanitary sewer, the wastewater treatment plant repairs, replacing the, um, the programmable logic input output master control cabinets, which is the SCADA, that's on both sanitary, actually that wasn't added, was it? No, it was. We had it on water, we added it to sewer. That's, that's what it was. The water system, replacing the water line to the wastewater treatment plant from the highway. The water tower replacements, what we had on there was, I think it was, it said something about rehabilitation. And we don't, we are to the point where we cannot rehabilitate, we need to replace. So we updated that to replacement rather than rehabilitation. And that's for the two, two towers, one at fourth and one at 13th. Parks and Recreation, we added walkability and connectivity study. And that actually is part of our 2025 budget. Public, the comprehensive plan as well, sorry, the comprehensive plan. And then our, for our public buildings and facilities, we added the Energy Conservation and Capital Reinvestment Program. Computer, Community Center HVAC replacement, City Hall's roof, Public Works's roof, the Park Shop expansion. And then the restrooms at the Eisenhower Park and the downtown public restroom. The possibility of a downtown public restroom. And airports was not on there, so I put tea hangers in. So that is, you'll see that the plan lists all of the, the updated, plus the ones that were already there.
One thing I would like to say, lest there be a mass panic in the city, the water towers are not in danger of failing. This is the plan to look, look ahead and be, put a plan in place to replace them. One's 100 years old, one's 94 years old. So we need to start, actually that process should have started years ago, but we're going to start it now. So.
Good reminder on that one.
Man, I think you had a little bit of a projection here on how those projects look for the next 10 years. Is that, I'm trying to find the spreadsheet in my packet here.
Uh, yeah, we have the estimated cost and then we broke it out next to that on this, on the spreadsheet that had city funding and then non-city funding and how that was going to be combined. And then with what the city was going to be responsible for, we identified what those funds were going to be.
Have you done, uh, like a projection for what we need for revenue for the next few years to make that possible?
I think that's what 2025 and 2026, that is what we're looking at on the spreadsheet. Now that includes that $25 million Southeast Drainage Project. So if you take that out, but yes, you'll see those numbers, we, we went through those numbers together for the next several years, just to make sure they were up to date.
I guess like.
Next two weeks prior to the next meeting, as many as we can.
I guess I'm just looking from a city budgeting perspective. Are we looking at a, a three and five-year timeline for that? I, I didn't, I'm skeptical, I guess, of the, the accuracy of the numbers that you presented. There, this, the numbers you presented showed we spent 2.6 million dollars more than we took in, in 2024. Is that accurate?
That would be accurate. Yes.
So, um, my concern is the sustainability of that type of spending. And then what this capital improvement plan does as well.
Well, the purpose of the capital improvement plan is, is to give us a roadmap on where we need to go and what we need to do, our major projects. It's a living document, not everything could possibly, or not everything possibly will be done in 2025. It's in 20, that's scheduled to, it could be pushed to 2026. But it gives us an, it, it gives us the roadmap of where we need to be and what we need to budget. Obviously 2025 is out because we've already budgeted for that. But it allows us to start planning for, okay, what do we need to do? What roads, what major road projects do we need to do? And Brad and I have been in, in, I'm not going to say deep discussions, but lengthy discussions on that. And water lines are another thing. We have to look at our water lines. We're, I mean, we've had some major water line breaks, if you're not aware, this winter. And, uh, we need to look at some of our water line infrastructure. So it gives us a, it gives us a path, it gives us a roadmap as, as to where we're going. It's a, like I said, it's a living document. The numbers are not to be precise, they're, they're what we call budget hold placeholders for budget, budget numbers. You get an idea, you plan around that, and then you go in when you're ready to do the project and you get more refined numbers. So that's, um, that's what we're looking at.
And I think it's always, always, I understand it, but it kind of is always frustrating those. When you're looking at those budget numbers too, and you're having more going out, a lot of times it's expenses on projects that grant funding has come in for. So it's always a little, I, I don't like using that budgeted dollar amount as a baseline because of that. Because, you know, this two and a half million dollars from Commerce, that's going to inflate our budget by two and a half million dollars. It's not city tax dollars, but it still inflates it. So it's.
Well, and I'd like to address that revenues and expenditures that we saw in 2024. Those expenditures, we had those cash reserves set up. We had those, those, we had that money earmarked in sales, in our street sales tax. It had been sitting there for several years and now we spent it. So that's where you're going to see that revenue didn't come in as much because we were spending some of our funds that we were saving for these projects.
Yeah, 14th street would be a major part of that since that was paid for in cash.
Do we have any further questions on the CIP plan up there, CIP update? Okay. Seeing none, we will move to 2C, Energy Conservation and Capital Reinvestment Program, RFQ Discussion, RFQ Review Committee. Looks like Travis, you were the only one, huh?
I however, wasn't the only one on the committee. In October of '24, the city sent out a request for qualification for an energy conservation and capital reinvestment program. The purpose of the program was that it identify, design, install, maintain, monitor and arrange financing for comprehensive utility conservation program. The responses were received from five energy service companies, Amerisco, MilligDB, Wigman GP, Snyder Electric, and Energy Solutions Professionals, otherwise known as ESP. Each respondent was brought in and presented, uh, and to be interviewed by a committee consisting of City Commissioner Trevor Witt, City Manager Ron Marsh, Fire Chief Kale Strunk, Facility Maintenance Brendan Alvarez, and City Inspector Travis. Highlights from the interviews include an investment-grade audit, audit, IGA is only change, chargeable if the recommended plan is not implemented. Commissioning would be the, the process of integrating and testing all the, the system in all conditions. So that, uh, that would be making sure the equipment worked that was installed, if any is installed. The initial comprehensive assessment to determine which is the best value would be for a IGA. Company bears the cost of an initial assessment if the city does not move forward. Using local contract, contractors and businesses as much as possible and making sure that the local can service what is installed. We've had some issues with that before. Provide design to contractors to get efficient bids. Willing to work on it in a phased approach, I, a long-term relationship, uh, brand neutral, no corporate ties. They weren't tied to one specific company who had to install this only system. The committee was more comfortable recommending two companies to move forward with ESP for the water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plant and MilligDB for the other city properties. Both are Kansas companies operated by their owners. We recommend to discuss and decide if the governing body would like to move forward with both companies and direct staff to be negotiating an agreement for a timeline for their services. If the governing body does not want to move forward, direct staff on a timeline for revisiting. And we have no funds for this budget in '25.
Can you walk through your, or the committee's thought process on, um, choosing one for the wastewater treatment plant and then the other company for city properties?
When, when we were doing the interviews, the biggest thing that was standard out, one of the biggest things that stood out for me is how many of them were on multiple cities. So like for Sam, for example, Salina was on there by multiple of those companies that, so they had hired it in. Also, after the interviews were conducted, uh, one of the biggest things we questioned was where, what the committee thought was a big savings would be wastewater and the water treatment plant. And after the interviews with them, we felt like one, this one company would be great for the, the buildings and, and other, and many of these we have. And another would be fantastic for a water treatment, water, uh, water plant.
It was determined in the interview, better in-house subject matter expertise, just on their previous projects that they had been up to. So, um, but both interviewed, both of these companies in particular, their, um, presentations. Of course, it's always a sales pitch, but actually outlined what the process would look like. And so they were, they're probably the best communicators at explaining if we were to move forward, what, what the actual process would look like and what information the city would receive.
ESP set it out very well, had a very detailed worksheet breakdown. And they had it to where, um, like a series of things that, that a entity needed. And then it brought it, brought it down even more to where you go with, let's say rooftop units were needed in building A. They had it to where you were replacing rooftop with this super high efficiencies, going with mid-grade efficiencies and going with this bare bone stock. And, and going at costs and showing you what, and what the projected savings would be with each.
Yeah. And I guess to take a step back, the pursuit of this comes from this long ongoing discussion about energy efficiency and particularly going through our budget here today, that utility piece. So where we pay, what was it? Eight hundred grand a year towards utilities and then, and then also in maintenance and costs are another eight hundred grand. So these projects are common throughout municipalities and other big organizations where they'll do this energy efficiency audit and then the those improvements are paid for by the savings. So if our utilities go down by $400,000 a year, but it costs us $400,000 a year to implement it, that's where that gets paid for. Ideally with this equipment, then lasting longer and serving a better purpose. And one of the things that was pointed out too, just in our capital improvement plan, highlighting the need for HVAC units at the rec center. These companies have, the engineers on staff are going to tell us, doesn't it make sense to still have that many units on there? Was it, were they actually properly sized or is there a proper number up there? Because each one of those is pretty expensive. And if they determine, hey, we don't need one of them, then that, that's great. Just highlighting the point that we've had issues with the rec center, like the rec center roof. So it's like, well, there might be something different there that we can learn from this. So, and then on the wastewater, water, that also had a tie, not just to energy usage, but efficiency and the actual production of the utility. So the production of water, providing insights into that, because that's come up in past conversations about our wastewater or, or waste from the reverse osmosis plant. I've seen this group in particular was, was attractive of being able to really look at that and provide some insights for us. So.
Have either of these proposed contractors, I guess, been presented with the possibility of not doing the whole project? So they're aware that that was a possibility?
Yep.
Yeah, yes. And multiple municipalities go to a phase approach is what they said.
Yeah, because they could, just like our CIP, you can come back to, they're going to come back to us. If we move forward with this, it's going to be a big number. And then we're going to, oh, we don't want to necessarily bite off that much right away, but then maybe we knock out some of the low hanging fruit and things like that. So.
Another big thing in, in my opinion was to design it so the contractors can get efficient bids. That's, that's a major problem with bidding process and stuff like that. They, if they don't know, they're guessing of what they're going to have to put in. You get guess numbers. And if you, you know exactly what you're putting in, they're giving a very detailed plan to them, they can bid it correctly.
And wanted to, Travis kind of pointed this out too, but really wanted to highlight it because it was a big part of both their presentations is that initial comprehensive assessment is more like scope refinement of working with our city staff, like with Brennan, to refine things down and refine that list, which will really end up on our CIP. And then we'll pick things from there to move forward to the investment grade audit, which is that it's jargon with this, these sorts of projects, but then that's kind of that reference document for the cost savings and how the improvements will pay for those, get paid for by the cost savings.
And, and that Millig DB, that company was the biggest into the, uh, they understand the, the money and the budget restraints that the, that the city would have and, and they're, they're, they were the most to look into what's the best bang for our, our money that we could get out of this, what we could, what our potential savings cost is. So when you have the saving costs, then you you compound them to other projects then, and you get, you just pile on as you go per se.
I'm, you mentioned that there was nothing in the budget for this. I thought we had budgeted for the audit. Is that, am I not remembering that correctly?
Yeah, that was actually budgeted in twenty four, wasn't it? We, didn't we include a piece for that?
No, we've not budgeted anything for this in, in any year that I've been here.
Okay. For some reason I was thinking we did that and we sent out the RF, or when we approved the RFQ.
Because this goes back, I mean, the, the, this started as a solar discussion 2021, I believe, prior to my tenure here. And then I think it was in 2023 that we directed the city manager to do an energy audit or do an RFQ for the energy audit. And that's why I thought we budgeted in twenty four, four, twenty five. And I don't know if you're remembering that same thing, but that's what I've gotten in my memory.
I already thought I remembered that and made up a budget item apparently. So.
I'm not seeing the.
No, we didn't. We may have put it in initially, but taken it out to get down to, to meet the budget request of the commission. So.
Yeah. And costs incurred for this don't happen until we hit that investment grade audit stage. So the, whenever we, or there's staff time and all that sort of stuff, but external costs don't incur until after we choose to move forward with the investment grade audit. So the the initial comprehensive assessment or that scope refinement happens at risk to those companies. So they, they've got the incentive to show us where we're going to get the most cost savings across our facilities.
And I apologize that there's six hundred pages of these.
There's a lot. It was a lot to go through.
What is the, what is the proposed timeline for that investment grade audit?
Like how long the investment grade audit takes?
I guess just kind of maybe the timeline for the process. So to get to the investment grade audit.
We don't have one yet until we know if we want to move forward.
Okay. I think kind of the, the question mark, and you, you realize this is if we go forward, it's a contingent risk, right? We say, hey, yeah, let's go do this. Yes, we want to do the investment grade audit. That's free, right? If we go forward with all the other stuff, it's not free if we decide not to. So I think that that's really important to understand. I think, did they have an estimate for what that cost would be? I think I saw it in at least one of the.
I think two of them had a cost per square foot, if I remember correctly. Travis, do you remember? Maybe six and 10 cents. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And that was one of the key questions of the, that we were concerned about in our interviews. But again, the, the checkpoint of the comprehensive assessment happens before that investment grade audit. So that'll be a a good checkpoint for the city.
They all have the same answer to that question. It'd be so small that you wouldn't.
Yeah.
And that initial comprehensive assessment, at that point, we could give input, I assume. So it kind of a little bit of a.
They're all like, like I said, the, the two that we picked are hundred percent knowing. If you, if you, the governing body want to go a phase approach, they will only take, you know, a certain amount, whatever. It was all, they understood that. They were, both of them wanted to make a partnership for a long term. They, they, they think that's the best of just having a bam and they're out of here.
So there's a little bit of a safety net before we get to the whole investment grade audit through that piece of it, that comprehensive assessment.
Yeah.
I think maybe everybody on the commission knows this. And actually, you, you weren't involved in the solar discussion, but the wastewater treatment plant is probably our biggest user of energy, but it's also using the cheapest energy. So there's different, different paybacks, different economics. We get a quicker payback with city hall typically than we would with the wastewater treatment plant. So there's kind of some, some funky economics that are important to understand.
On, as a, again, the timelines can be really up to us for the scene, a whole project through, depending on how big of a scope the city wants to take on. But the Millig presentation in particular, they walked us through a municipality they had just done in the previous year. So we can potentially, again, not have that specific municipality, but the general timeline of how that worked out with that municipality, we can get that information from them.
And just so I was, I'm clear on this, the two that you chose were six cents per square foot and 10 cents per square foot?
I think that was the, the average between all, all of them, isn't it? I don't know if either one of those gave a gave a cost per square foot. I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head which one's dead. I just remember seeing those two numbers. So.
I, I want to say ESP gave us like us.
Yeah. And that'll be, if the commission decides to move forward with something like this, that'll be in whatever agreement comes back to us. That'll, but yeah, depending on which facilities they're going to dive into.
Yeah, I did find it on ESP here that there's is six cents per square foot. Did the, I'm sorry, I don't know the square footage of city buildings in total. Do you know what that number would?
I don't.
Okay. I guess it'd be nice to know what that, or what the committee has proposed, what that essentially, if we decide we're going to pay for the investment grade audit.
All square footage of all, just a rough estimate?
Yeah. I think it'd be nice to know what we're at risk for.
But that, that number will always come down because that total square footage will come down at that scoping phase.
I understand that, but just before we, obviously, there's no point. I mean, I think if there's no cost to us to go to that scoping phase, absolutely, we should do that.
Yeah.
No question about that. But I think before we go much further, we need to understand, you know, what are we looking at for at risk if we decide not to take?
Worst case scenario.
Yes, you got it.
And also with having it broken down with water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, and then separately for the other city properties, it might be good just to break those two down separately. That way if we, it does make the most sense and I have a feeling it likely would to move forward specifically with the water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant. Like those are probably where we're going to make our money back. But it might be good to have those broken down for those other city properties and then those two.
Then do, no problem.
Um, just really quick here, I'm trying to find that page. Which one are you recommending for the wastewater treatment plant?
ESP.
ESP.
Okay. And then Millig for the city. Thank you. The remainder.
Millig was the, uh, the big on the commissioning. That's was a big standout for us on there.
Yeah, it was multi-season. So the city inspector was alluding to that of the some, their unique pitch was, yeah, some companies will go and go, yeah, I mean, it works. But then that was during perfect weather conditions or whatever you want to. They would commission it across all seasons. So knowing that HVAC is a big part of these sorts of projects, you want to make sure it works across all seasons and it's doing what it's supposed to.
If the city paid for something, we're getting what our savings is supposed to be out of it. And it's, that's guaranteed out of them. I'm jaunts well aware with battling with the solar stuff.
Do we have any further questions on the energy conservation and capital reinvestment program RFQ?
I'll just look to Chief Strunk or Brendan, anything that we missed? Oh, yeah.
And I guess speaking of timeline, I may only speak for, you know, one vote, but I would think getting that, getting those, you know, worst case scenario, dollar amounts for each, you know, each option there. And then that's something if we decide we're interested in it, I mean, we can, we can start working, we can work that into the budgeting process this year.
I, I have no problem getting those numbers, too.
At least that way we have them up front before we really start on that.
So I'll look over to city manager. Are you good with a consensus across the commission to move forward? Or you, next meeting, do you want to vote, want to vote for us, from us? Okay.
Just for your information, I tried to pull up the budget for twenty five and only the twenty fours on the website.
I probably need to add it.
Thank you.
I'll make a note. Thank you.
Do we have any further questions on this item? Thank you. Thanks for being the lead person, Travis. Thank you for everyone that worked on that committee as well. I know it's kind of interesting for the commission. We don't really get in that very often. So have once and it's, it's a lot more work than people think. So. Okay. City manager Marsh.
What we tolerate, we will accept. What we accept, we will normalize. What we normalize, we will pass on. For too long, I've tolerated the bullying, unprofessionalism, immaturity, misleading statements, outright lies, and most importantly, the lack of integrity and character of one commissioner, John Kohoff. By tolerating this behavior, it has become acceptable for him to continue to do it. Now that it is, now that it is acceptable by myself and others, it has become normal, part of every meeting, every conversation, and it is expected. And because it has been normalized, it is destined to be passed on to other governing bodies and city staffs. They will know no different because we, you and I started out by tolerating it. It is time to end the tolerating, to end tolerating the misbehavior of one that potentially affects so many. What we tolerate, we accept, and we have tolerated this individual for far too long. Galatians five nine says, a little leaven, i.e. errors and lies, leavens the whole batch, perverts and misleads. This is where we find ourselves, having tolerated to the point of normalizing the perverse and unprofessional behavior that is spreading throughout the city. Thank you.
Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Who wants what?
I think it's second and let's just vote.
Doesn't matter.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we will roll call vote. Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohoff?
Hi.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. We're adjourned.